7:00 PM, special permit for less than 30-foot tall expansion at 57 to 59 Center Street, marked after map ID 31B-267, as advertised on... 27th.
So it would be the 20th and the... for the 19th and then... One more thing. Those are last year.
13th. 13th. Before we get to the presentation, I talked to Carol about this. The Central Business Architecture Committee, we often do these at the same time, but they have already heard from the applicant and they voted to approve. So unlike, say, when we get from the both of them to join here, this is just us. So if the applicant, they'll choose from the presentation of the applicant. Ready? Yep.
I'm Tom Douglas. I'm an architect in North Hampton. I'm working for John and Paul Sirio. John's a lawyer in Boston, and neither of them are here tonight, so I'm presenting it. They own this building, two buildings, so it's two buildings on one lot. Let me get this thing to work. So they own that red house and the house that Circa's in. So I think they've owned it for many, many years. Circa, the restaurant there, is gone. The red house used to be a multifamily house, and it's been pretty much vacant for a year or so. And it's mostly gutted inside. They started taking it apart a little bit so we could look at the structure and figure out how we were going to shore up a very understructured building. So the project's kind of grown over time. The reason we went to Central Business early on was because we were almost ready to go with the project in its form at that time, but then we decided to wait until the rear setback, elimination of the rear setback was passed to come before you. So that's why it's taken so long, is we were waiting for that setback change to happen so that we could then work on a project that went all the way to the back property line. I mean, we're 12 inches off the back property line. So it's two buildings on one lot. The Circa building is 1,355 square feet, and the red house, the part that... well, the red house is 970 square feet. And the back part of the red house is really, really in bad shape, with a bad addition back here. We're going to knock that down. We're just going to save the front part of the building. This is Center Street right there. This is the backyard right there. Circa is right up on the property line. That's a concrete block building. And the red house is a really nice house that once had great Victorian character. It's kind of a sort of Gothic Victorian house. This is the same plan. The colors, these are all color-coded, so I think this one shows what's going to stay and what's going to go away. And then this is the proposed basement plan. Let me just... okay, so this is the proposed plan. So Center Street right there, that's the Circa building in light gray. This light gray part right here is what we're keeping of the red house. The back part, like I said, is so... the structure is so bad, the foundation is just totally shot, that we pretty much have to knock it down. So we're planning on building this section right here as a structure that will be in the same vein as this part of the structure, the red house. Then we're going to build a flat roof area right in here and right there that is the same height as the Circa building. And then it's going to have this interior courtyard that's open to the air, so you won't really see that from the street. This will be, this part right here will be very glassy. This is all outdoor seating. But it's conceived to be as one single project. It could be broken up into two different uses. This could be one side. It could be... there's no tenant for the project yet. The hope is that it will be one restaurant tenant who takes the whole thing, and this will be dining. This will be kitchen. There'll be bathrooms right here. This will be storage. This will be a bar. This will be dining. You'll enter right here, and this will be an outdoor seating area here. But it could still be broken up into two separate tenants. We don't know. We're taking the red house, the floor level was a couple of feet above ground. We have to cut the whole floor out and drop it down so that it's handicap accessible. So the grade here, if you're in a wheelchair or whatever, you can just roll right up into there at grade and come into... this is all going to be the same floor level here, so it's fully handicap accessible. We're dropping the grade of the red house down. That's the roof plan, so you can kind of see, that's going to be flat roof. That is flat roof. That will be flat roof. That's open to the air. This is the red house with the gable roof. We're adding a little dormer to it right here. And then this is an addition to the red house, which is a gable roof as well. It's a side elevation. Boy, the graphics really got wacky here. It looks like it's built out of brick. I... those are supposed to be clavwirts, and they look like giant concrete blocks. It's really strange. So you can kind of see here, that's the Circa building. That's the red house. We're going to totally redo the front of the red house. So this is the rendering of it. And so the red house gets pretty much a facelift. Go back to... if I can go back. Sort of goes. You can see, it's just got these three windows up there, and it's all clavwurt. It used to have a porch right there, and it's got this little sort of addition, bad porch. We're going to redo all those windows in the front and create this big glassy facade that has a big crown molding on top of it, and then the three windows on top. Shingles up there to keep the Victorian look. But this molding here, you can see it there, is what ties all three structures together. So going to create a big molding around those front windows, and then it goes across and... sorry, this thing keeps going up. It's my laser tape, and that's why it keeps not real. So that's our addition right there that we're adding. And that is designed to try to tie these two parts of the structure together, along with this long horizontal big crown molding that has a real historic feel to it. So we're trying to keep a historic look of the building and then use an architectural element to tie the two pieces together. And you can see, it's got the front patio there. The entrance, like I said, is in the middle. And then the Circa building will be... we'll take the glass and redo it and make it a little bit more historic looking. And then you can see, this is the height of the pink house next to it, the Italianate Gothic house, which is a really nice house. And so what I'm here for is, we are proposing an addition here that's lower than half the height of the standard required in the downtown district in Central Business. It's only going to be about 12 feet high, and the requirement is 31 feet high, I think. And the reason we don't want to build a 31-foot-tall structure is because we'd like to try to keep this building to be the dominant structure and the strongest character-defining structure on the site. We really want to dress that piece of that building up and bring it back to its kind of residential feel, but it's going to be a little bit more open for retail use. And we don't want the other structures to be competing with that really nice building. And we'd like to take elements, like I said, the horizontal band, and extend those out to create subservient additions to this red house. It's not going to be red anymore. So that's our plan, is to try to keep our new addition lower, tie it into the existing architecture, and not make it overwhelming or overpowering to the existing architecture. I just feel like it would be a very totally different project if we had to build a 30-foot-high addition. It would be very difficult to marry it into the gable roof of the red house there. We'd be ripping off the side of that roof, and it would just be very ugly if we tried to glom it onto the side of the red house. The only real option to make it look good would be to rip the roof of the red house off, like I said, make it into a completely different structure. Probably be a flat roof. And we'd lose a lot of the character that I think is important in this building. Those are longer views. But if we did build it up to the required height, I think we'd be about that height of the neighboring building. And I think this in the King Street, I mean, this in the Center Street, it becomes a little more residential, and that becomes a little smaller scale. I know the police station is going to really change the scale of that street because it's a much bigger building. But I think as you get closer to State Street, scale should be allowed to stay a little bit smaller because you're transitioning into a residential neighborhood. And then also, behind this building are houses, and it's pretty much surrounded by houses. So I'd hate to see a big, tall building built there with a flat roof that lost all of its character. So that's the main reason we are here tonight, is to get approval for that lower structure.
Sorry to interject. Is this the same council meeting? It's not?
No, Planning Board.
Okay. And that's next week? May I just ask if it's next week, on next Tuesday?
Yeah.
If somebody's like that confused about that. And may I just ask one last question? The elections for the city councilor and the mayor are on the same day, or they're not?
No. November...
8th.
8th.
8th for the city councilor?
Everybody.
Okay, everybody.
Everybody.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the applicant?
Overall, I agree with your ideas here, but what's actually happening in the upper floor of the red house? Is that just going to be open?
Yes.
So that's just going to be a high space over the bar area and so on?
Yeah. The part that we're adding in the back, back in... back there, there is dining space under that. We could... there's a part in the very back where we're going to drop the ceiling, and I think we can, we could have a little loft space or a little storage space, but it may end up just being mechanical equipment. But there's no second floor living or working space at all.
Right. So that's just lighting over the bar?
Yeah. And there was another thing that I forgot to talk about, was since the kitchen, this is a Circa building, the kitchen's going to be right in here, so we're going to... I didn't show it, but we're going to have a hood exhaust probably right in here. That is representative of a rooftop air handling unit. It'll be heating and air conditioning. And we're going to have a hood exhaust that comes up out of this flat roof now. I was talking to...
Peter and Jack.
Peter and Jack earlier, because you said you own that house right there, right? So they had a concern about where is the hood exhaust going to come from? And I don't know exactly right now, but I do know that it's probably going to be above the kitchen space, because that's the kitchen space right there. Like I said, we don't have a tenant for this space yet. So, you know, the final restaurant layout is really of my own making. I don't have a real restaurant client that I'm working with yet. I've designed a whole bunch of restaurants, so I kind of know the general layout of the land, but this is my projected use of the interior, and this is what I'm thinking, since they already have a kitchen right back there, that we'll probably keep the kitchen back there, and that's where the hood exhaust would come up. So they were asking me, what height is it going to be? Like I said, it's about 12 feet high. If I... the goal is for all the mechanical equipment to be in the back, because I think the prime directive that I understand is that the mechanical equipment not be visible from the street. I know that the Central Business District people are very concerned about that. So that's our...
What about the locations of dumpsters?
We won't have one. It'll be daily takeout. So we have a trash room in the back. So this, we're building to the limits. I mean, this house here is right up on the property line. That's right up on the property line. There's no, since we're building, we're infilling this area back in here to that property line, that would be where the dumpster could be. Right now, the trash is back in here, and it comes out the middle. As soon as we close up the middle here, anything that's back here, the only way out is through the little shared alleyway right here that the Sirio's own. So trash is really going to come out on a daily basis. It's not going to be a dumpster.
So you're going to store it inside?
Correct.
And every day, you're going to, what, wheel it out to the curb?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, there'll have to be a service that comes every day to take it away. So we have a little designated trash room right there. And we do, we're proposing to build a basement. So this is a basement plan. So there's the red house, it's just in the crawl space. There's the inner courtyard, it's just a slab on grade. That's the entry, a slab on grade. And then this is going to be a full basement, two stairs in it, that will allow them to have a prep kitchen and some storage space, and they probably won't store their trash down there, or they can store their liquor down there and that kind of thing.
The rear of the red building that you've got to rebuild, is it going to look essentially the same when you're done?
Yes.
Same roofline?
We're going to drop, step that roof down. We're stepping it down just a little bit here.
Step down before.
Yeah, I did step down a little bit, yeah. Yeah. So, but again, to try to keep this as the prime, nice, character-defining element, and then step this down, and that's a little less...
When I went by there a couple of days ago, the back was totally open, and you can walk into it.
Oh, and the door or the walls?
There's no doors.
Oh, okay.
There's no floors.
Yeah.
I just thought maybe it ought to be buttoned up a little bit, to keep the neighbor kids out of it or something.
I agree, yes.
When you rebuild, when you lower the, you're essentially going to lower the floor in there. You're not going to change the outside at all, or chop the foundation out or anything like that?
We're going to have to rebuild a lot of the foundation wall.
But you're not going to change the overall height of the building?
No. It's hard to, I guess... the foundation's one of the most complicated parts of the whole thing. So we're keeping, the foundation wall we're keeping is that bit right there, and that's a brick foundation wall. And then we're going to build a concrete foundation wall on the inside of that to support our new floor on. But that's the only part that's really salvageable. Anything along here, we have to build new so that our new stuff can tie into it, and anything back here, it just was in such bad shape, it didn't make any sense to keep it.
On the windows, I mean, I have a huge plan. There's no entrance here in the front of the red building?
Yes. Right there is a door.
Which one?
That one right there.
Same place the other one is, essentially.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. It wasn't clear from the...
Yeah, see, that's a door. I mean, these have probably been a little bit updated and possible. No, I guess they haven't. You've got what we, the latest plans. So center door right there, and the middle addition, and then a little door right there. So the red house, you know, could become an independent structure at one time. I mean, if, along down the road, if they wanted to.
So the, do you go to the overhead seating chair?
Yeah, the plan, yeah.
Now, so that this outdoor patio, it's actually behind the facade.
Yeah.
No roof.
Correct.
So water, because it's the roof of the red house, it's just going to drain right in?
Yeah. Yeah. We're going to have to have a drain in that floor. All of our, and you know, all these flat roofs back here, get the roof plan, they all have same condition. This flat roof right here has got a, it's going to drain to two, one or two or three center drains right here. Those drains go down through interior walls, and they'll tie into underground pipes that go out to the street, to the storm drainage.
Does DBW have to weigh up on this? Because the disturbance is less than they care.
They don't have to do a separate permit, but they have to get tie-in permits. So DBW, I can put that.
Okay, so there's still...
Tie into the city drain.
Okay, so DBW will have to look at...
No, I kind of like the design. I think it, you know, reminds me of what happened to Bill Stevens' house during Inez-Af, you know, which is in the sideline from this one. You are the edge of a residential area, so can you speak to anything about what is happening on that back lot line, or you...
I don't know.
Okay.
But that's not residential per se. I mean, that's mixed use. There's offices down there.
That's that little street, center court.
Oh, right. I just think about, all of a sudden, whoever is on the other side of that fence is going to find a building all the way to the edge, and they've got to find the handful of things hidden from the front, which...
Right.
And so I just, that's the only concern I have for it. I like the design a lot.
Well, any other questions for the applicant, because I think there's people here who want to speak. Mark?
Do there any comments on the architectural review board? I know they approved it, but do they...
Yeah. I mean, the only, no, and they really liked the project. They felt like it was going to add a lot to that end of Center Street. And I think Tom's probably already addressed it, and the one concern they had was to tie in the, both the middle addition with the two buildings and the banding is what Tom referred to was important for them, to sort of tie those three pieces together. And then there was a discussion about windows and the options of trading out one of the front windows on the formerly Circa restaurant to potentially a door, I think that you had mentioned previously, in case that became retail.
Oh, right. Yeah, if that wants to...
And all of that is really just sort of detail for review. So that's an option that was left on the table, I think, as well, just to allow flexibility. But overall, you know, they really didn't have, I mean, there was a permit with conditions, but also discussed sort of tying those elements together.
Right, because so they're taking the door, the existing door at Circa is going away.
Right, but there was also sort of the option on the table to leave the ability to put a door back in if they wanted to in the future.
So in case, in the future, this could be one, that could be one tenant, that could be a common entry. This tenant would need a door probably right there, so they allow us to...
If there was separate entities. And my bike rack.
Bike rack is actually not shown right here. It's on the plan, but it's supposed to be right everywhere.
It's on the plan. It's not on the...
We're trying to maximize our...
So any other questions for the applicant? We will, we'll leave public hearing open until we can go out. So save, this is everybody, thanks, Tom.
Okay.
So just, if you'd like to make a statement, just come out, go to him, state your name and address, and have your say.
Yes, I'm Peter Tiedelman, and I'm co-owner of 53 Center Street with Jack LaForte. And, you know, the design looks quite nice. One of the concerns, and we asked, as Tom said, was this exhaust. And I don't know exactly what the answer is, but the Circa, I think that Tom said would be...
12 feet high?
14.
14. And of course, we have a two-story office building next door, and just, you know, we'd love to have the exhaust be higher, so that exhaust wouldn't come into our building or be directly visible to it. That would involve probably a higher pipe or something to move it out. Then the question, I guess, visibility from the front, but perhaps if the pipe could be curved in some direction or somewhat higher, it would be good. Granted, there are buildings in the back, but there's a big court. In Center Court, perhaps the exhaust could go towards the center of it with some angle. And then on the left, behind our building, is another psychotherapy building. There's also a lawyer's office back there. So anyway, our interest about the exhaust is to not have, you know, be right in our face for health reasons and aesthetic reasons. That's one thing that we wanted to bring up. Another is on the side of...
Let's jump in. Where does Circa's exhaust go, though? Where did it go? I mean, that's where the kitchen was.
We should know that.
I think it's in back. It is in the back of the, about two-thirds to maybe three-quarters from the street currently.
It's at eye level now, right?
Does it come out of the side of the building?
Is it in the back, or is it on our side, on the side across, next to ours?
Maybe both. I think there's two. That's right. I think there is one on the side and one in back on the roof.
There's one on the side facing your building?
No, facing the other building. Facing the red building. The, what's now a driveway.
Right.
Yeah.
So one thing that's a little different, if I heard it right, is that the back of Circa, well, no, I guess it won't be any shorter. Seemed like that the...
I'm going to go back to the...
Yeah, that the space directly behind will be closer to our building. Won't extend as far back, and that would also add to a little bit of that concern about... So where you have, let's see, on the far left, the top two-thirds, the blue, yeah, that whole part, is that...
Can use that.
That's new.
Is that...
That's brand new.
Yeah, that's not any building space. That's like a flat space. Is that right, or is it a building?
It's a building.
Okay.
It's a new building to be the same height as the Circa building.
Okay, that's good, because I thought if it was shorter, it would just be, the exhaust would be that much closer somehow. Anyway, the other, and Jack has an issue he wants to... is the window on the Circa. Is there going to be any more windows than is already there?
On your building's side? No. I didn't even know there was a window there, but there's no reason to have any windows in that side.
So maybe you won't even have that one. There's one.
Yeah, we should... Oh, actually, I think there's one.
Essentially, you show one being filled in from...
Yeah, so...
And towards the front.
Right, there. That one's blocked out. Well, keep that one there, because that's part of the storefront, and then there's, maybe that's the one we're talking about that we block out.
Okay.
So I, so if you're okay, that was an issue for you. Filling in that window was an issue?
No, that's better. I mean, the window hasn't been a real problem anyway, but filling in is just that much better.
My name is Jack LaForte. As Peter mentioned, I co-own the building to the right of what currently is the Circa building. A concern that I have is about parking in the neighborhood. For instance, wondering what the capacity of this restaurant is.
Oh.
How many people is it going to, you know, draw?
It's going to be...
Yeah, the thing, remember, this is Central Business, there's no parking requirements.
Oh, I see.
You can put in anything you want in downtown, and we don't require you to have parking.
I see. Okay. Even the fact that there's some spaces that would be lost, that that's not an issue?
Nope.
No. This is more directed to the architecture committee, and that is, you know, I assume that the Circa building has already been grandfathered in, but its position is right to the sidewalk. And I was actually hoping with this new plan that it would be set back to kind of meet the line, the current line of the other buildings on the street.
In other words, demolish the front of the...
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
It's not really so much an architecture, I mean, it's a zoning question. There's zero setback, and we have a maximum five-foot build-to-line. So the idea is really to build as much as possible up to the sidewalk, to the, so in fact, it's consistent with the zoning, and there wouldn't be any sort of grandfathering, because it meets the current zoning.
I see.
There actually might be.
Well, I think, my own opinion aesthetically, when I first saw the building, it seemed very odd and very out of place in that neighborhood, and that was like 20-something years ago. And I understand that it was originally used as a motel, like back in the 50s, and then, you know, later was used as a beauty parlor and so on. So it's kind of an odd structure.
It was an appliance store for years.
An appliance store, okay.
But just, so you know, so downtown, our goal, or the goal of the zoning of downtown is to get the buildings right up to the sidewalk. So the fact that you guys have a little yard in front of yours?
Yes.
And so if somebody ripped that down?
Yes.
If you guys decide you want to put a building there, and just like, knock the one you have down, we can make you build up to the sidewalk.
I see. How does that fit, though, with the historical character of the neighborhood?
Well, I mean, a lot of it's organic, you know? It fluctuates. Not every building is the same. And then also, the central core has expanded over time as well to sort of allow continued a sort of infill of that. And so you'll get some variation in that regard between sort of what's referred to as transitional residential structures versus more commercial buildings.
So our new addition is actually set back further than the segment allows, I guess.
But you have a building, so we're not going to make a tear down your building if it was five feet long.
Right, but that's also part of the special permit, is sort of...
But I mean, our newest addition right in the middle, that's non-conforming as well.
Right, but you, the planning board can grant a special permit for that too, which I think is advertised as that it's this lower height and setback. But it's the same thing, is that, you know, you know, you're adding, you're filling in a space, you're not building brand-new with a blank spot, you know, like slate.
So, well, let, let, I want to let him finish, and then you can come back.
Okay. Uh, I mean, those are my main concerns. I think that overall, it's a great improvement to what's there, and I think this has a lot of potential. But I guess my disappointment is, you know, in terms of facade not changing, because I think that it could have been much more attractive to the whole part of the street, you know, if, if it was handled differently. So thank you for hearing me, and-
Just playing off what Jack said. Actually, there's, there may be an advantage for us, because sound will be blocked off from people that are sitting outside having it that high. But maybe the facade could have a little aesthetic nature that's different than it is, whether it's slightly rounded or something, that would handle a little bit of what Jack was saying, or not completely.
I guess it's, I, I know I will never have any success asking my client to take away square footage. I guess our, our goal, what our, the hope is, is that we add some architectural detail to, to that hideous block. Make it look a little bit better, because it does kind of look like a garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely does. I completely agree with you, and it's totally out of keeping next to your really beautiful Italianate house.
What about wood?
Well, actually, I, I have to, I have to, the central business architectural committee has, we don't have any jurisdiction of what the building looks like. That's what the central business architectural committee does. So if you guys want to have a conversation-
Yeah.
Outside of here and talk about what the front should look like in terms of wood and treatment, that's fine, but we, we don't have any authority over that.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
I was just about to ask if we had any authority over what it looks like.
No, that's what, this is, the central business architecture, that's their purview.
That's what I thought.
So, we can talk, we can talk about your position, your, your question about traffic, I mean, about the parking?
Yes.
That's us. About, um, the setback?
Yes.
That's us. But, um, central business, downtown is a special district, unlike almost any other part of the city. There's one or two other historic districts, but central business architecture, for this part of North, downtown, has purview over the look, so. But you guys are more than willing, but I think if they decide to change it, they have to go back in front of central, yeah. So if you decide to make substantive changes to the front of it now, that they've already approved it, you have to go tell them.
Well, they would have to apply.
I, I, I have a question. What's the role of the architecture committee?
What's that?
What is the role of the architecture committee in a project like this?
Well, they evaluate the design and make sure it's consistent with the, the guidelines that are adopted. They met in May, had a public hearing, I think it was May or June, and had a public hearing on the facade changes.
So it's very similar. We did, uh, remember with, um, the bakery, bakery, bakery.
Hungry Ghosts.
Hungry Ghosts. So when Hungry Ghosts came for their permit, we actually, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I'm not sure if you were here for it, but usually we meet, meet at the same time. We meet with the central business architecture committee. So for that particular project, we were all here at the same time. This one, we're just meeting separately, so. But if you guys do decide, as Carolyn said, if, if you come together and you make some decisions you want to make about changing the facade, then they have to go back in front of, file amendment with the central business architecture committee. So, there's nothing to stop them from having any conversations about it. No, we'll tell them. But it's just not us.
I see. Okay, thank you.
But the blower is us. Blower.
Well, I'll keep that in mind, yeah.
Well, potentially, I mean, this, it, you know, the permit in front of you is for the addition. There's an existing restaurant there. If you took the building and converted to another restaurant, the rest of it could go and file a building permit tomorrow with the building department, and there would be no review by any outside committee, because restaurants are allowed in downtown. So, um-
That's true, but because it's a special permit, we can discuss it.
Yeah.
It's on the table if you want to, so. So any, any questions? So I guess, yeah, the only question, do we want to pursue the blower? Do the blower, they're putting, you don't really have the design for where the blower's going to go. I think what they're asking is, I'm not sure how, how well you can direct them, but-
You can run them horizontally for a distance. So, um, so the kitchen is right in here, the hood will probably be on that wall there. And I was, we're trying to remember where the hood pokes out now. Does it stick out of the wall right there, or is that-
What they're saying is that it sticks out the driveway side.
Oh, right in here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So what we can do is, if the hood is here, we can run the ductwork over across to a location more centralized right here. Um, we have to, by code, stay either five or ten feet away from the, the, that guy, the air handling unit. So if we were right in here, and then, you know, quite high enough for it to be visible from out here, that, that, that might work. If, the closer we get to this roof, the higher it has to be, and the more visible it is from out here. But, but that's, that's not a big deal, is to run it horizontally over to here. I know they're going to want to run straight up there, but I think if we have a good enough, um, you know, reason in trying to be nice neighbors, that we can run it horizontally.
Well, I do think they're competing interest. I mean, you're wanting, next door, you're wanting it to be up high enough so that you don't notice the exhaust, and yet, there will be people in town wanting it low enough that they don't see it, and, um-
But I think that, that solution is to run it horizontal, where it's more in the middle of the building, so it's away from their building.
Right.
And so it will be-
Well, and then Catherine commented, Carolyn's commented, it could be, uh, yeah, but a restaurant could go in there right now and use, you know, where, where they wanted to pretty much.
But that's, that's one of the good things about a special permit. So once they, once anybody applies for a special permit, we have a lot more freedom in what we can do. If it was just a site plan, then we probably couldn't even have this conversation. But because it is a special permit, it does open it up for us to add a little more input. And I think it's, you know, it's a valid request. It's an office building next to a restaurant. Especially if they can get it over towards the center of the building.
Was this brought up with the central architecture, that it can't be seen, no matter where it is or configuration is, that it-
We put it on our renderings, and it was just not visible at all. And, um, I think it's-
They did talk about, you did break and raise it up at the hearing, it would be in the back, and it wouldn't be moveable.
Yeah, it seems like no matter what, you can't see it.
Right.
So if you just suck it up, straight up like a, you know, telephone pole, to get it to, get the exhaust high enough, but then you'd see it from Center Street, which, I would imagine, contrary to what the central architect wants to see.
Yeah, we were trying to show-
I think the biggest thing was the air handling unit is probably more obtrusive than an exhaust fan. I don't know.
They're like, you know, about four and a half feet tall, and it's a big giant.
That's one of the air conditioners?
Both.
Oh, well, one unit per-
Yes. Yeah, I know when Set Jolly, you know, the house behind the fire station, he built his house, that, that big three-story-
Oh, yes.
I mean, he built it behind Fly By Night, which used to be the, the paint store for a while.
Oh, yeah.
And then Fly By Night built that addition there, and then they put their gigantic air handling unit like ten feet away from his living room window. He was not too happy with it. He, now it doesn't bother him quite so much, but it was a, a big change for him.
Now he put the building on the market, he's ninety-five.
Tom, did you consider putting, you, you sort of talked vaguely about the second floor rear of the red house.
Yeah.
That it could be a second floor. Would you consider putting the air handling unit in there?
I don't know. It's one of those budgetary issues where it's a lot less expensive to buy a unit that sits on a flat roof than putting it inside.
Yeah, I think, you know, I don't want to look too crazy at the vent, because, you know, I, I do agree with Carolyn. It wasn't for the site plan. A special permit, wouldn't even be talking about it, but, so, I think-
I was asking for my own-
Right, but I think if, if he's willing to, you know, put in a horizontal conduit, or whatever it would be, to, to move the vent away from the property, I think that's more apparent.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely get it right in the middle, right back in there.
That's a good point.
Right, we'll put that as a conditional permit. But I don't want to start re-architecting by moving the, the air handle. Sorry.
It's not the air handle, it's the hood, it's, uh-
The hood exhaust.
The hood exhaust. That's what I'm saying, it's the hood, it's not the-
Oh, no, I actually was asking about the air handle, because you said that was the bigger item. It was a curiosity.
No, no, I know.
Yeah, but by the time where it's set, it's, you know, it's probably thirty-five feet back, so you, you'd never see it from the street level.
I'm sorry, did you get, did somebody, did one of you guys-
Oh, no. Well, I, I was just going to say, if it's in the center, it would give more room to circulate anyway. It might be better. Right, so it's the airflow.
Right, so we're all going to talk about the hood, I think.
Yes. Yeah.
All right, so we're going to put a condition on it, that they, they, uh, move the hood over, well, not move the hood, but-
The hood exhaust to the middle of the structure.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, to move and close the public hearing?
I don't know.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? We really only have one condition.
Oh, wait, I just wanted to tell you that, um, DPW had a couple of comments. Granite curb corners removed from the curb cut should be returned to DPW. The applicant shall install vertical granite curb to match the existing across the closed cut. New concrete-
Can you back up a little?
Yeah, so they're, where they're, they're closing the curb cuts, where the driveways-
Sorry, actually, I have something.
I did give him a copy of the, um, DPW comment. They want the curves returned, the radius, um, returned to DPW. New concrete sidewalk shall be installed in accordance with DPW standards, and a trench permit will be required.
What's the next permit?
Anytime you cut it.
Good night, thank you very much.
Tom, did you hear the comments from the DPW?
No.
That's what I handed to you before.
Oh, I didn't read it.
Right, they want the, 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 the pieces of granite, the, the curb pieces of granite, you return those to DPW when you infill the driveway.
Okay.
Don't take them. Apparently, yes, people take more costs.
That's expensive.
Well, in fact, I think every permit we do, every time we close a curb cut, the DPW wants the curb piece out.
Hundred dollars a foot, right?
Well, that's, that brings up another question.
I'm sorry, Tom, we closed public hearing.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, after the hearing, after-
Well, uh, well, this is a follow-up to the question that you just asked me, that it's tied to the question you just asked me. Do we have to remove that curb cut?
Yes.
Because when we did the fire station, there was a curb cut that we didn't remove.
That's a fight, it's a DPW.
Yeah.
I think they're going to require you to close it.
Yeah. I can't imagine any way they'd let you do that.
Yeah.
All right, so we did two separate comments.
Could be handicap access for this room.
Carolyn, so we've got the closing of granite?
And the sidewalk, I don't know. I think your sidewalk has to be installed in accordance with DPW standards, and vertical granite curb has to be replaced with that.
Right?
I think it's, I think the plans are terrific.
I really don't want to get a place, you can get a tent that's going to fill it up. Henry?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Anybody want to make, maybe you want to make a question? Oh, ready to be screwed.
Special permit for eleven thirty-foot tall expansion of fifty-seven fifty-nine Center Street from a massive mass, thirty-one feet, there's two six.
With the conditions?
With the conditions.
Four conditions for DPW, and then the, um, hood exhaust.
Yeah, I think we got, put a little wiggle room on hood exhaust and-
Well, if we finish your motion, get seconded, then we can wiggle. Second motion?
Second.
All right. What was coming first?
We shouldn't require that we put a light in the center. It has to have some wiggle room in there to allow, otherwise they're having to come back if it won't work out for some reason or other.
We, I mean, you could, um, you could just indicate that the, um, hood exhaust has to be horizontally directed towards the middle of the property. As opposed to, you know, in a way from the abutting parcel.
Though, I think the, the spirit of what we discussed when, when the butters were here was that there was going to be some kind of-
Yeah.
Not just aiming it towards the center.
He might come up with some other.
Right, I just don't want to create a instance where, if it's not right in the center, that there's, the, the, the butters are going to say, well, you didn't do it, we originally thought, I mean-
That's not how I heard it.
Why did you?
That had to be right in the center. I mean, I think the spirit is that it's a way from the abutting parcel.
Towards the middle.
The way to do it is-
It's impossible to plug the metal.
Right.
Okay, so you want to make the condition?
Hood exhaust should be directed horizontally toward the middle of the property and away from the abutting parcel.
Are people comfortable with that? That removes their requirement of, you know. Any other discussion on this one? All in favor? All right. Good luck.
So Chairman Suck, why did Suck get closed?
I thought it was a mystery. They just, like, one day they just closed.
Yeah, it would be maybe a year.
Really?
What? Well, it's different ownership. Yeah, it's switched ownership.
Oh, they, recently before the change?
Couple of years, probably, right? I don't think there were ever, I never saw them moving.
I just like-
But it was, it was only open in a family staff.
Yeah, it was like this time.
Well, it's like the place that's celebrating its twentieth anniversary. Do you know the place next to the restaurant, Little Vegetarian?
Oh, Bella.
Bella, Bella. Bella's here, so that's been there.
Because of somebody to give it to Jerry. A lot.
Really?
I used to pass go to this, that was one of the few places my parents visited. It was packed all the time.
Yeah, he's got a little, you didn't go to Pete's, I always said I'm going to Pete's.
I talked about Bella.
Show movies and stuff.
The Boston River.
All right, we back up.
We have a continuation.
Yeah, we have, um, one continuation we have to do. So here. I'd like to open up a continuation of Connecticut State, Department of Subdivisions, scheduled for seven thirty. The applicant has requested additional continuous to December eighth meeting. Now, was there a clock on this? Didn't they have to come to us before a certain time, or they can keep extending as long as-
They can keep extending. I mean, as long as they write a request for extension.
As long as we grant it.
As long as we grant. So there's no ninety days, six months, anything like that? They're not on a clock?
They are on a clock, but every time they extend it, it extends the clock. So we need to make sure, right. And the, the issue is, if they don't request the extension, or we don't grant it, they can get a, a permit by default, essentially. So it's really, um, you know, that, the, the flexibility goes toward the applicant in that regard. So you can get a, um, you know, a permit. And in fact, that just happened in East Hampton, if you are remembering in the paper. The Valley CDC project, they says they didn't grant, um, an extension to review the permanent issuer decision within the period of time under state statute. And so they got a constructive grant of a permit, essentially, and they're holding that over the heads of the town.
So it's not that they can't get the permit, it's that they automatically can get it?
Yeah.
Wow, I thought it was the other way around.
Kids, you don't want to feel your oats and deny the permit, deny the extension.
Oh, right, that's like a backdoor way of denying the permit then.
Right, right, right.
The only con- concern I have is that this week gets delayed, 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 let's say, February, and we all want to do a site visit out there. And it's, if it's the middle of February, we can't see. You know, we won't get a very good, if there's, you know, two feet of snow on the ground.
Well, you could do, you know, I'm not, I don't think the layout of the road is going to change that dramatically. So if you wanted to do, schedule a site visit now, when the leaves are down, you can, for more than two inches.
There was an issue about moisture too, and so forth, which you're not going to see in February.
All right, so maybe we should do it in the next month before-
All right, we can about three or four.
Sorry, you know, but, because you've been looking at this, I mean, these guys originally came to us in the eighties?
Nineties.
Nineties. So they've been going back and forth for a long time, so, but, except for Frandy, most of us haven't been here that long.
I've been here since the nineties.
So maybe, um, I'll send an email to people, and we can try to figure out, maybe it's, like, take an hour on Sunday, after Halloween, and, uh, take a walk through.
I think the other issue was, you know, it was so overgrown in the summer. I think the other issue was, you know, it was so overgrown in the summer and so wet. And I think you all were hoping for it to dry out, it hasn't really dried out that much, but at least the leaves are coming back.
I was down there, I was down there and it was like being in a maze actually, you know.
Well, Ruth, do you want the property much?
Uh, not the entire thing, no. But yeah, schedule something, we probably have to do it on the, on the public area.
Yep.
We'll probably have to do it on a weekend now that it's dark.
That's what I mean, so we, like a Sunday or something like that, do an hour, go out and turn out. Alright, I'll send a maybe note.
So they requested a continuation to December eighth. I know we're gonna have at least one other permit. It'll be coming on, actually, we probably have two permits coming for the eighth. Plus, potentially, um, a sub, another subdivision at state hospital for the eighth. Although they haven't filed yet and we haven't looked at it, so I don't know if they'd be ready for the eighth anyways, we might have to put them off to January.
What, I mean, a new subdivision means a new road?
Yeah, new road section. They came, do you remember they came before you for preliminary subdivision and then all of a sudden, I think it was right at the public hearing or right before the public hearing, they withdrew?
It was, it was before, yeah, it was a law of some sort.
Right. So they've said they've addressed the flaws and they're ready to come back. They haven't filed officially yet, but we just heard today that they're planning on filing so they can get on the December eighth again. So that's potentially three projects for December eighth are ready. So I guess I'm just sort of throwing it out there to strategize about timing, if you continue this to the eighth, whether you should put this right up at the front, since it's a continuation and neighbors will be there, so you wanna address them. Because the other projects aren't really quick, simple ones per se, so it's not as though we keep, you know, get those off the docket.
Can we, are we meeting on the twenty second?
Of what? I wasn't planning to.
Well, that's, I'm just throwing it out, we don't do meetings.
Typically, just stuff or no, you just have one.
But we could. We could have a meeting.
Wow, Frandy.
Yeah.
I don't need her if it gets matters and.
You won't?
I won't be, I'll be in.
I'll, I'll be in San Francisco.
Celebrate Christmas on Long Island, isn't that a problem?
The twenty second way before Christmas. What is Christmas?
Ken's in.
So that means we possibly have Kensington subdivision at the hospital hill, what was the third one?
And then, um, a site plan in industrial park and a special permit in Florence.
And we can't do any of these in November?
No.
And can we, can we push any of them in January?
Well, the subdivision from state hospital is, my guess is that they probably won't be ready to go.
I would try to push them at least because I can't imagine, the subdivision, you know, the state hospital, that takes, it's a long meeting. You know, follow, subdivision followed by another subdivision.
But, you know, the other thing too is it's sort of order, these other ones have already been through and we've had to push them to December because they weren't ready. State hospital's sort of late to the game, so it's easy enough to say, sorry, doc, it's full, you're gonna have to go in January, so we could do that.
What are the chances that Kensington is not gonna be ready?
I don't know, I mean, I was surprised they weren't, weren't gonna be ready for tonight, I don't know what, what delayed that.
The original was supposed to be September.
They actually wanted to be on the second evening of November until I told them it was Thanksgiving. So they were sort of caught in between the November, early November meeting.
Yeah, I would say put them first, since, like I say, neighbors are sure to be there.
Right. So we do them at seven P M, we push hospital hill off to the first meeting in January. And then we still handle the special permit and the site plan.
Industrial park and.
Yeah, those, those complicated, I haven't even seen the.
No. Yeah, um, no, I mean, if we have everything ready to go, she, they should be very simple, straightforward projects. And I know for the Florence one, it should be okay, cause we work with them, we said, you know, hearing the issues, and they're so, all the remains, we seem that they address those. And industrial parks should be pretty simple too.
Kensington's gonna take a while, especially if it comes with a real plan, so that, that could, that's, that's a three hour.
So seven o'clock for Kensington then, and then I'll, um, work the other ones in.
Alright, does somebody wanna make the motion, Kensington, seven? Oh, Jen, you raised your hand.
Oh, oh, we have to actually, oh.
We have to, yeah.
Like, the whole.
You have to move it to Kensington.
Uh, sure, I would continue, um, the continuation of Kensington State's continued subdivision. To, I'm sorry, December eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, Brandy, have you considered that vote? Alright, so Catherine's gonna be here in a minute. Should we do the minutes? We have minutes from nine eight, nine twenty-two and ten thirteen.
I'm compliments to the man.
Yes, sir.
Did not go under.
She didn't think nicely about you, but she has.
She had already noted some amendments to the minutes, which I made on my digital copy that I gave you for you. And now I can't remember what they were.
They were just small, it reading.
Yeah, they were sort of, um, hanging, Jared, is that what they're called?
Oh, wow.
Hanging chads.
I've waited for Catherine.
It's by transportation. What happened?
I broke my arm. My elbow.
Must've taken it for last night, it didn't happen last night.
You just can't stay away from injury, from managing.
I have a big issue on why it happened. You know those darn angle parking things down Main Street? I was grabbing my bike right down Main Street through the traffic and somebody just backed out.
We need reverse angle. We have reverse angle.
Go the other way. I will testify, I will, you know, appear in public meetings about the parking thing. Those angle parking.
Wait, when did this happen?
On Tuesday.
I think I saw you biking on Tuesday.
Must've been before.
It was before. Cause somebody came right out like that, I squeezed my brakes on, so I wouldn't get creamed. And I went right over the top.
I went over the handle.
Oh, I got my arm fallen. That's my saga.
So how long is that gonna be?
I don't really know, maybe not.
Okay, she's the poster child for reverse angle.
Exactly.
I will testify.
Take a picture now.
Where do you sign checks and stuff?
I don't. Somebody else will.
Drive me places.
Alright, well, let's just do the minutes quickly, then we can do the CPA. So, do you have a comment? Devin, you sent your comments in a minute.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments on the minutes? I'd like to see mine even bold, if that's what.
That's valid.
Do you do that?
No, no, I'm just kidding.
Sir, yes, the comments.
Everybody wanna make motions to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of September eighth, September twenty-second, October fifteenth.
Next, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, I understand I can't vote on the ones that I wasn't here for, so.
No, that's not true.
You can't vote for permits you weren't here for.
Yeah, you can vote on accepting the minutes, actually, even though you weren't there.
If you want.
Yeah, you don't have to.
All in favor? Alright. That's actually, sorry.
Wait, is this the second?
Jen.
Jen.
That is, for Kensington, we were all here for the original. We were all here for the original, right, we're all eligible. It's so long, this thing's been continued so many times, I can't remember.
Except for Andrew, um, that's the one item that associates are not eligible for.
Right, but, uh, none of us missed the original, I don't think, we have to go look.
I'll have to go look in a minute.
I thought I missed one of the continuation.
See, that's okay, you can miss it.
Well, you could've missed the continuation if nothing was presented.
Okay, cause I don't really know where it stands, but you'll catch us.
Well, yeah, for the, we don't talk about it, it can just continue with. They're not even here to present anything, so they don't have to show up.
Does that mean I get to skip the whole for the other meeting?
No, your comments are still valuable.
Yeah, you could, you were just, you could actually vote.
I didn't really believe that one.
But you're.
Your comments are still valuable, you should show up here in the camp.
Oh, I'll be in the brew club thinking about you.
Thank you.
That's the one that's out, Front Hill Road, just sort of a loop.
Yeah.
So you're there, same, but it was a long time ago, so I don't have.
Alright, so Catherine, CPA?
Yeah, CPA, um, just to catch everybody up, we're on our second round for two thousand and eleven. And we had nine, I believe we had nine original expressions of interest, but only ultimately six, um, applications. And as you, those, I don't know how many of you were there last night, you were there, but if anyone else was there, you hear, the process is that we, the applications come in, we do written questions back and forth, and we do, um, meetings with public comment. Actually, two meetings with public comment to see how much support there is for the projects and what people's concerns and interests are. And then we do some preliminary recommendations. And then the next meeting that we have is November second, and we will have, the whole meeting will be devoted to deciding what we're gonna recommend. And then it goes to the council for two votes, because they always take two votes on these kinds of appropriations. So what I thought I could tell you would be what all six applications are and what they're asking for in relation to the total budget. Because one of the, um, the expectations in the CPA plan for North Hampton, and I think actually for CPA throughout the state, is that there be, um, some kind of matching grants that we're not paying for the whole thing. And also, I wanted to tell you how much money is in the pot right now. See, I've got that somewhere. Well, it's a, there's about close to eight hundred thousand dollars that is available, um, right now. But what we usually try to do is not spend all of it, because the new round that we'll be starting in January will be for applications that we will give funding to in May. And so we wanna save some of the money that we now have in the pot for, um, for those applications. So we don't wanna give away everything. And we get the state matching funds every year in October. The money that comes in from the city, from taxes, is about eighty thousand dollars a month that goes into the fund. But the big chunk comes in from the state in October.
So, does that eight hundred thousand include what you're expecting from the state?
Yes, yes, that's the total it will have from now until next October in the state. Plus our monthly amounts that are coming in from the city. So, um.
You do the considerations how often, twice a year?
Two rounds a year.
So you wanna save half of the state money for the next?
We'd like to, I mean, it's not, never exactly precise how it gets parsed out. Ten percent of what we give every year has to go to open space, ten percent to this dark, and ten percent to affordable housing.
At least, uh, what?
Minimum, minimum, yeah.
So one of them could be eighty percent, you know, two, ten each?
No, one of them couldn't be eighty percent.
Eighty, ten?
Well, yeah, I guess it could, yeah, you're right, then there'd be. But we also obviously wanna have money for the fourth category, which is recreation.
Okay, but there's no, what statute already?
Required.
Minimum on.
So we have, um, this, on this round, the, um, for recreation, the request for, the application for Florence Fields is two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred, um, which is the whole project. It's basically finishing the fields, creating a playground and, um, a little concession stand, bathrooms, that kind of thing. And the total budget for that project is two million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred. And, um, we have already given Florence Fields other grants to, that have taken care of design and kind of preliminary preparation of the area of drainage kinds of things. But this is how much they want from now on to finish the project. Then, uh, open space slash recreation, two applications. One is Mineral Hills, which are the two, um, areas of open space that will connect with two other pieces of land that are already protected. And that request is for three hundred and two thousand, and the total budget there is seven eighty-seven thousand.
Who's that come from?
I think there's state matching.
No, no, who made the request?
Oh, oh, the, um, O P D.
So can I just go back to Florence Fields for a minute?
Yeah.
They're, they're requesting the, the entire amount, but they have a state grant pending?
There's a park grant. What is park, P A R C, what is that acronym?
I think it's Parks and Recreation something.
Yeah, so there's a potential five hundred thousand dollar grant that could come from them for that.
So is there a thought to make the approval contingent upon them receiving that, or if not receiving, applying for some two months?
Definitely the contingent on the park.
Right, cause otherwise it would be a hundred percent contribution from the CPA, yeah.
What about, uh, the rec department, as far as I know, hasn't tried to raise any money for this on their own. Have you guys talked to them that you would, you would rather than give it to a mall, that you would do a matching, like, make them match?
Well, we've, we've talked about that, yeah.
And what did they say?
Quite expensive conversations about that, where their view is that the, um, the families who are so involved in recreation really put a huge amount in anyway, in terms of fees and uniforms and all the things that they pay to get their kids out. And so they're at, they don't, they say, we can have car washes and, and we can have bake sales, but we can't raise this kind of money, so.
What was the reaction of the board, the CPA?
The, our, our group, well, we haven't yet pronounced on it, we have.
No, no, what did you say to the rec department? Did you say you would like them to do some fundraising?
Yeah, we said we really would like that, yeah.
So when you mean fundraising, you mean not getting, not leveraging other money from other grants, but actually doing direct fundraising themselves? Is that what you're?
Yeah, why not? I mean, there's, how much fundraising they grow food, you know, they have to do. You know, when they came to buy, how much fundraising do other projects in town do to get matching funds from the CPA? I, I think for the rec department to come and ask for two point two million dollars and, and not have anything that they're offering, I think is, is unfair to all the others.
Apart from if they get the five hundred thousand.
Even if they get the five hundred thousand, that will drop their, what their request is to one point seven. After they've already gotten, what, five hundred thousand dollars from the CPA for the Bean and Allen Farm?
No, but that five hundred thousand was for the acquisition too, and it included the farmland.
Right, but the, but the money for the design as well.
But design for the recreation fields, I would say it was two eighty, something like, do you remember?
Two fifty, I think.
What they got for the preliminary, you know, laying the thing out.
Well, I understand that almost half a million dollars is for, oh, sorry, is for a playground, which feels like maybe an accessory to the, to the fields.
Not quite that much. Well, it's, yeah, the playground, play equipment, play surface, play sign, the picnic pavilion, site furnishings, that all comes to four oh one.
For no fundraising?
I mean, the thing is that nobody on the, on the CPC yet has clearly said, this is what I think we should do. I know that some people think, um, they should get it all, because it's hugely popular in the recreation community. And others think they need to raise at least a part of it. Other people think, um, that we might fund, uh, the fields and not the playground. You know, there, there's a lot of discussion that still has to happen, which will probably happen on Wednesday.
But you're voting on Wednesday?
November second, we will make a recommendation for it. However long that meeting goes on, that will be our discussion.
Sorry, Jennifer.
Well, my question was about the choices, and I hadn't heard anybody talk about a phased approach. And considering what we've gone through with soccer fields, I was wondering, you know, if someone ought to be talking about, we could, we could do this piece and start it.
Yeah, we talked with them, they had someone from Berkshire Design there at our last meeting. And, um, he said that, um, it's much more expensive to do it that way. But really, they need to do all the drainage and all the layout of the fields in one fell swoop, because you'll save a lot of money in the long run, rather than doing two lacrosse fields and then two baseball stadiums and, and you could do it.
Well, and they're gonna have to do parking for anything.
There's parking, yeah, but there might be a way, I mean, if you.
But there might be a way, I mean, if you're talking about fields versus the concession and the playgrounds.
That's, that's kind of a direction that, yeah, what, what do you think?
Soon as you're done, soon as you're done with your sentence. I just wanted to tell you what PARC stood for.
Oh, what?
It's not PARC, okay.
Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities.
Okay, that sounds good.
Citizen towns are acquiring and developing land for parking out of it.
They won't, the city will not receive that park grant unless...
It's a state grant.
The, the CPA money is sort of first-in money. It's a, it's a commitment to get, get the process going. And in that case, it's contingent, we're contingent, giving it on the park grant coming through. The park grant is also some of contingent, seeing how much the community cares. But on the other hand, there are issues about other kinds of fundraising, like say the Lacrosse Association of America, or the Little League, you know, National Little League, something, applying to them. And one of our issues is that if we, if we recommend $2.2 million, why would anybody else give anything? Because they have it all.
Right, it's not a whole lot of...
Right, $2.2 million is all the money for the CPA for three years.
Well, no, what, it's, it's bond and...
Right, but then you'd be locked into paying, you know, a certain amount for 10 years.
Could be years.
Years, years, years. And I, I struggle with the fact that the rec department is doing little or no fundraising. Everybody else in town who asks for money from the CPA has to go out and do a lot of fundraising. And the fact, you know, to say that, you know, there, there, there are people who are tapped out who would do it, well, there's lots of people who had kids who did it 20 years ago.
Right.
You know, it's like the Y, or the library, or Grow Food North End.
I mean, it's like people like me. I mean, I would make a contribution, even though I don't have kids who are playing soccer.
Right, so I, I really struggle with them coming to the CPA.
I don't think it's, I think it's a narrow view. And I think there's, having to raise something is really an important part of these CPA grants.
Yeah, I think it's a very important part.
So that's the position that I take. You know, it's useful for me to hear what the planning board thinks on these things, because although I'm not, I, I mean, I, I come from this committee, but everyone on the CPC tries to think about what's, what's best for the whole community and not just represent your own little constituency.
Everybody?
Not everybody. So that's our goal.
I don't think the CPA quite has that same...
Our goal is to have a culture in which people see the wider needs of the community and not just their own little lands.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so that's what we're, that's what we're going to be talking, that's going to be a big one.
Mark, oh, sorry.
I wanted to tell you the other ones, because there's also, there's other...
Hold on, take care, you have a question on the...
Well, I was just going to say, relative to the, to the fields, the biggest issue for years, I mean, the Oxbow and everything has been the fields, 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 we need the fields. But not so much the playground, you know, equipment. So that, to me, that's an easy thing to break up. It's a good chunk, 400,000. It's not specific to the initial needs of the city being the play fields. So, you know, fund the play fields, you're on your own, you know, raise some money for the playground and make an effort and do something like that, so.
I think that, that's what a number of us are thinking on the committee, although I can't speak for other people right now. But I think when we raised that with this Berkshire Design guy, of course, he wants to do the whole package. And he shows us pictures of things he's done for Agawam and Chickapie and other play areas, fields. And he said, people like to have a playground, because they take an older child to play soccer and the little kids can play on the jungle gym. So that, the philosophy is people like it better, and it also becomes sort of a community center for picnics and people come on the weekends.
And he's right, and, but that would be, that would...
Look, look, look.
That'd be something to shoot for, when you say, hey, we've got these fields, but look what we could have. And as far as the prep, the site work initially, he's right with the grading and everything in the substrate and all excellence. But you do all that once and still prep for a future playground over here in the corner, whether it's now or a year from now.
You don't have to build it now. I mean, that would be my view of it.
You have to build all the underground, get ready to receive it in sometime in the future. But then you can fundraise, and that would, to me, that would be, hey, my, you know...
You could fundraise off all the people who've brought their kids to soccer.
Right.
Soccer, just on the cross and say, look, we want your...
But see, they say we're paying for these expensive uniforms and these...
They don't have to.
Right, and that's, that's, that's not an argument. I mean, that's like Grow Food North End, they're already buying their food, but they still gave money to Grow Food North End.
Well, let me tell you the other ones, and then...
For our miss, you, you got to the open space at Mineral Hills, but you said there were two.
Yeah, the other one is sort of open space slash recreation. It's an extension of the bike trail along the Connecticut River up to the Hatfield townhome. It's called the Connecticut River Greenway. And the amount requested is 200,000. The total budget is $8,225,000.
Did you guys reject that at the last one? What?
Because compared to some of the other things, we just thought it was too big. And there were a whole lot of permits that had to be gotten, and it was not as clear as some...
And this time?
This time, it's a little bit less complex. There's going to be a boathouse down here, I think, that Smith College is behind. And there are more permits that are kind of in place for it. It's still a lot of money, and what, it's all for design. Because if, the idea is, as Wayne explained it, is this is to have this shovel-ready, get into the queue for the federal money, which would be the, this is the 8 million, which would actually make the whole thing happen right along the river.
So potentially, the 200,000 from CPA could bring the 8 million from the...
Would put it in the queue.
To complete the whole project?
Although it'll be a number of years before it would actually...
That seems like a really fantastic deal.
It's a beautiful, beautiful area along the river, and it's, so you leverage, 200,000 leverages 8,000.
Sounds like, yeah, a great amount to me.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the way it should be, right?
That's, that's my no reina.
Yeah.
And, and the Mineral Hills also is leveraging quite a lot. It's leveraging kind of a double match, from 302,000 to 787, which comes, I believe, is that from state money, do you know, Carol?
Um, for that one?
The open space?
Yeah, I don't know if it's partially state and federal. I don't know the details of that one. I think there are different areas.
Right. The other, there's one other open space, which is a contribution to something called the Conservation Fund. Asking for 100,000, total budget 300,000. And the Conservation Fund is money that's available for OPD when opportunities come along to get land or to do some of the soft costs, to get the permits and make, make the project happen. And we have generally given, not 100,000, but we've given some, something to that each round.
Usually like 50, isn't it?
50, 60. I mean, Wayne always puts that in, because it's kind of like an endowment, you know, like that we contribute.
Puts it in the capital improvements area.
I think there are other funds. There's a Historic Preservation Fund as well. In Historic Preservation, in that category, the Academy of Music is asking for $275,000 out of a total budget of $581,000.
What do they want money for this time?
They need a new roof.
Bless them.
Don't they just have a new roof 10 years ago?
This is for the back?
30 years, or something like that.
About the front part?
Apparently for the back, the part over the stage.
They filled the marquee in...
Here's what they want.
The marquee came up at the CPA meeting last night.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the planning board, it was our call that would not, a non-scrolling marquee. And I wanted to raise my hand and say, it wasn't our call, it's a zoning call.
So anyway...
They said we were the ones who told them to have a scrolling marquee.
Here's what, here's what the Academy of Music is asking for. Interior and exterior historic renovations. Repaint the walls and ceiling of the auditorium and balcony. And if you've been there, or if you've seen pictures of it, it's all kind of crumbling, because the roof has been back and it's been leaking down, so it's a mess. In order to do that, they're going to remove all the old auditorium seats and install new seats. And replace the existing stagehouse roof to stop the leaks on the stage. Additional work would be painting the ceiling of the auditorium and installing new ceiling lights, but that's not going to be in this, in this project. So there are a lot of people who came for that one, too.
Now, have they done fundraising or matching?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they do a lot of fundraising.
Catherine, what are the numbers on that? They want 200, what?
They asked for 275,000.
Out of a budget of...
Of 581,935. And a lot of people, you know, a lot of people were there at our last meeting, over 50 people who were there to say, please give us the Florence, the fields. I would say that the Academy of Music probably had 20 people there who said, my child loves theater program and it supplements what they get in school. So it's a lot of, nothing like the fields, but there's certainly a lot of people there.
My kind of grand point, you said they needed a new roof, and the first thing that comes up is all new seats.
Well, I'm just reading the list out here. I think the, I have their, their budget here, if you want it. The, how much the seats would cost, how much the roof would cost. It's not the whole thing, it's not a whole roof.
Is there some question of whether historical preservation can include interior as opposed to just exterior, right? Because you're not, almost certain, the whole community's not accessing the interior?
No, it, it can, it can include.
It can?
Yeah. As part of the, you know, the renovation of the historic building. Then the last one is Beaver Brook Bridge, which I don't know if you're familiar with where that is. It's on the bike path from Leeds toward Haydenville. And there's an old bridge there that's, has a few cracks in it.
Is it the Rock one?
It's a beautiful old stone bridge.
It's bike path?
It's on the bike path. In order to have a good, solid bike path, which has got to be in place.
Really breaks some bones there.
Is it not safe to take a bike over?
No, no, you can take a bike. You just can't drive a train over it, it was an old train, or you can't drive a car. But it's a big, stone, arched bridge, it's old and...
Is it the one the DPW has on their list to fix anyway?
Probably, I don't know.
So why, why would the citizens have to request that the DPW was going to fix it?
This says, this is restoration of the Norwattic Mass Central Rail Trail Arch Bridge over Beaver Brook. The bridge was constructed in the early 1900s, has not been maintained since the 1970s. It's in need of repair and rehabilitation to maintain its integrity and ensure that it's safe for pedestrians and bicycles, and ensure that this historic structure remains for future generations. And they are asking for $104,000 out of a total budget of $111,000. So they're asking for 93%.
Carol, so this is, the DPW wouldn't need to work on this bridge? Because it's part of the bike path? I thought this is the bridge that was closed, there was a...
No, you're thinking of the Hotel Bridge. That's the, yeah.
Not the Hotel Bridge, no, no.
I think, okay, something...
This is in the woods.
That one we did fund, oh, the last round, the Hotel Bridge in Leeds.
So wait, who's bringing this one?
OPD. Wayne brought four projects forward. And then there was Florence Fields and the Academy of Music.
And no affordable housing stuff this time around?
No.
I thought you did 10% for the 401? Oh, 10% a year.
A year.
So you've done it 10% for this year already?
The numbers, I'll have to, I'll have to...
Well, those were the stuff on King Street, I imagine.
King Street, and then there was a, there's a sober housing project on Maple Street. That's another one.
The other...
Yvonne, Yvonne.
Yvonne, oh, yeah, that came up last night.
It's another Yvonne house. And so there are, without Florence Fields, there are requests for something like $900,000 with the project. So we're obviously going to have to make, yeah, 981,000 for the five applications not including Florence Fields. So we will obviously have to, you know, talk through, prioritize, figure out, you know, what, where we can give and what we'll have to bond. If we do give, we obviously can't give all of this, because we don't have enough money in the pot.
Did you guys do some bond funding for, was it, like, Florence Library?
Forbes Library, 500,000 maybe?
So it's like 15 a year for 10 years?
Something like that, yeah.
So you guys already, so Florence Field, say you did the whole $2.2 million bond funded, it would be 220 a year for 10 years.
It could take a while.
Well, usually you bond fund it for 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then, you know, those interest rates are low enough, so it'd be maybe 250 a year for 10 years. So between that and Forbes Library, you're talking $300,000 off the table for the next 10 years.
Forbes is almost done, Forbes is almost paid off.
So maybe they did a five-year on that one?
The idea as well is that right now, with the time to do bond funding, whether that helps for the future.
Oh, no, I completely...
But in terms of how big the basic pot is, I mean, there is legislation in Boston going on right now to propose other sources for matching funds, so that they could raise their match to 75%. Maybe from that big new gambling, the gaming bill. People, their licenses, some of that money would go to CPA grants, CPA funding.
Because right now, you're only getting 33%.
Yeah. And then there's the idea that some of the real estate transaction fees would go up a bit, because they haven't been raised in 10 years. That would increase the, the fund as well. But, you know, that, that hasn't gone through yet. The hope is that it will before the legislature goes home to business. But anyway, all of this is happening, as you all know, in the context of the ballot question on November 8th, which is saying repeal the CPA.
Vote no on one.
Right?
Yeah.
The ballot question, is it binding, or is it just...
Yeah.
The minute, if, if the voters vote yes to repeal the CPA, that's the end of it.
But if you guys have voted to bond fund something, you have to, the city continues to collect the money?
City will have to continue, but there will be new projects. They'll have to continue to pay off the bonding.
Now I'm a little more interested in bond funding. Interest rates at 3% and risking the possibility of losing the program.
So there's a lot, it's pretty, it's in a very intense time for the CPC to try to make good choices, and really don't want to... You know, there's a lot of voters out there. There are people who are saying, no, if you don't, we don't get these, you know, soccer fields, we're going to vote against the CPC, CPA. And people feel they're not being listened to, they're not getting what they... They're saying, what does the Academy of Music do for me? I want soccer fields. So, you know, people become these sort of single-issue voters. And so it raises concerns for us. We have to be terribly careful, that we're really serving the whole community in these decisions, and do it as responsibly as we can.
Well, it came up last night at the, the meeting. Did you guys talk about postponing till after the election?
Somebody raised that, somebody asked me that.
Came up last, yeah, last night, too, one of the candidates.
They won the candidacy?
So you guys, Warren? Yeah, so you guys didn't talk about them, CPA delaying this vote till after the election?
Well, we, we had some discussion about that. The question is, should we be intimidated by people's threats?
The real question is, if you listen but you disagree, does that mean you haven't listened? Or does it just mean that you disagree?
Right. And then if you listen to those who say, I want fields, and those who say, I want theater. I mean, we're not going to be able to please everybody.
Right, and I, you know, I, as much as I can...
But you can help listen.
Yeah, yeah, definitely listen.
And you do, right?
For sure. There's long, long public comment. Although I did stop the cheering, the children, you know.
Oh, God.
Cheering, oh, sorry. But anyway, so what do you all think? Do you think we should postpone the meeting?
Possibility, yes.
It's a possibility, it's been raised.
I mean, you guys could breathe, you know, could have a discussion at the next meeting and say, look...
We're not ready for December.
We're not ready, there's too much uncertainty. Let's wait until the ballot, and then the question's over.
Wow, that might look like we don't think it's going to happen.
That's true, I've just thrown it out there, but, you know, it's...
Why do you, how do you think people would react to that? I mean, should we just go ahead, this is, we're doing our best, as we always do, we're transparent?
That's right, sure.
Or should we say, it's too dicey, let's wait?
Is there a statutory requirement to have a meeting decide by a certain time?
Well, we have, by a certain date, we have to get the recommendations to the council. I think that's later in November. We could wait.
Do they have to act, um, before the general, first, because there'll be a new council, isn't it?
Yes, yes, they have to. They have two votes in November to send. They have two votes in November.
Oh, then that's probably gonna dictate your time anyway, because they can't, I mean, they'll have new council come January.
No, they, this council will decide.
Right, but I'm saying if you put it off till the end of November, it really pushes, because they have two meetings in December only and, I mean, they could take both readings.
I think you should just go ahead and have the meeting.
I, I'd say.
Yeah.
Yes.
It feels really superficially strategic to do that and not in a good way. I totally understand why you would want to, but doesn't feel great.
It came up at the meeting last night, one of the candidates said, you know, this is almost the wrong time to be making decisions with the CPA before the election.
Yeah, but she doesn't have a fund for CPA anyway, it appears.
Well, we have a long time.
Good, just be sure everybody votes no on ballot questions. Yeah, no, I mean, it's definitely a dicey time and, and there's people on the committee field pressure to, you know, how do we please everybody? You can't please everybody, there's not enough money in the pot.
Just because we do doesn't mean.
The planning board pleases everyone, right.
Well, then, you know, it, it, under observation, it looks like you're listening to everyone, but it's whoever rallies those people to come to a meeting, it's not necess, it's not a, a, a research question.
It's, it's, it's not a post.
You know, this is, I'll be honest with you, I struggled with you coming to us today, the week before your voting, because last time when you came to us, Jen, Devin and I all came to your meeting and we were too late. And now you're telling us now, your public comment session is over and so it's too late for us as the planning board, I was still way in, just like it was last time, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm, I, I really wish you would come to us a month ago when there was still time for us to publicly comment, because now there's not. So if we showed up at the meeting on Wednesday, just like when we all showed up at the meeting last time, and Fran buried.
Fran said we did not exist.
We did not, you, you missed your window of giving public comment, so I really wish you would come a month ago to us because this is a lot for us to digest tonight.
Yeah, you're right.
The public comment period is over and, and I agree with Devin. I think sometimes what the CPA does, it's a popularity contest. And you had fifty people for the rec department for the fields and you had twenty for the Academy of Music, therefore, well, it seems like there's more public support for the, for the fields and I think that's incredibly.
And a handful.
Democratic.
Yeah, I, I really, I really struggled with that.
And a handful of people who came for the open space project.
Yeah, and I, I.
It's just the process, I mean, it feels like the same thing in transportation department. I mean, you know, the people who are motivated to come out for something, come out and have your say, but it's no indication of how, what the solution or the neighborhood really thinks.
It's the same here.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, it's the same thing.
Ultimately, you're, you're thrown back on your own best wisdom as a committee to try to respond in a balanced way. I mean, as you said, or someone said, you listen, you hear them, it's important. I mean, one of the things I said is, if what you wanna say has already been said, don't say it. Just clap if you agree with somebody. So that the, the people who spoke were all saying, you know, relatively similar but slightly different things about, you know, how great sports are for the children and all that. So we know that and then as a committee, we have to just step back from all the intensity of that and say, what, what do we really think is best for this community? And where's, where are the balances? And, no, I think you're right, Susan, I think that, you know, I've been around in next year, that, you know, it'll be important to, assuming it passes, it doesn't get repealed, that it'd be important for me to kind of put it on the agenda to.
I do too, because I, when, when I found out that the meeting was next, I always coincidentally sent you an email last week saying, hey, let's talk about this.
Oh, yeah.
And you hadn't brought any of this stuff to us and you're voting next week on something that, when you guys voted last time, and I, I still remember the night, we were there, three of us from the planning board were there and the only thing we were told about CPA, oh, you're too late. And now you're coming to us, it's almost too late.
When, when did you get the, all the applications?
Uh, uh, August. And we, we accepted six out of the nine that were eligible. So that's when we began to get the full information and get questions back and forth. Remember, public meetings begin in October. So it's a, you know, it's a three or four month, four month process. And what will happen, the public meetings for the next round will be probably in March. We'll get the applications in January.
Put that on your calendar, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, I mean, if I had sent you that email last week, were you gonna talk to us about this at all?
Well, I should, I certainly should.
I think it's important because, you know, you're our representative to this committee, we appointed you to represent us and I'm glad you're taking the global perspective on it, but I think it's important for you to hear from us as to what we're, our thoughts are. And I, I struggle with the rec department coming to you, even if they could pack an audience with lots of kids and lots of parents who were.
Sorry, do they have?
Yeah, do they have their soccer uniforms on? I mean, we've had this with the Oxbow, we've had it all the time. And I really think they have to bring a lot more to the table. And I want the fields down there. My kids play, I coached in the rec department, coached ten sports for them. But I think it's really important that they bring something to the table. And I really think it's important for the CPA to make it very clear to them that they have to be doing more. And I really, I struggle with the fact that you guys might put yourself in a position of bond funding for ten years, something that's gonna cost probably a third of your budget. And that's, that's a big chunk of change. And I, I, I really think they have to do more, I think I agree with Mark in terms of phasing it, I think it can be phased. And I think, yeah, it might cost a little bit more and longer, but something like that can be phased over a long period.
It really stands out as the one project where they're, they're contributing so, such a tiny, tiny percentage relative to the other ones.
Right, some are, you know, fifty to one to the bike trail or forty to one to the bike trail, nothing for the rec department.
If, if the CPA had never been passed, what would the rec department do? I mean, it's kind of, there, there is funding for lots of projects, this is sort of like for things that wouldn't normally be able to get.
I mean, it might be an override like the police station.
Exactly.
Or they go to capital improvements. Capital improvements funds the rec department for fields, that's part of what the capital improvements.
But there's a lot of competition for all of those sources and.
Sure.
Yeah, you have to, I have to say for the, I mean, maybe, I, I can't say I know all the grant funding sources, but Recreation probably has probably the least number of sources for grant funds that I know of. I mean, maybe there's some hidden things in there that, you know, like you said, Little League Foundation of America.
Yeah.
That the soccer.
But you know, whereas affordable housing, you know, you've got block grant, you've got other sort of federal and state monies that come in.
And historic, historical stuff in the open space is a lot of that.
That being said, I think, well, I agree with the, I very much agree that the, the rec department should do something, you know, to, to raise funding and that it's, it's totally skewed what they're looking for. From a, just politics and everything aside, from a strictly planning board point of view, there's an obvious need for fields and that, that's been coming through for three years. So I think the need is, it's been demonstrated, so I think the fund, my opinion is the funding should demonstrate that. And from a planning sense, that the bike trail to Hatfield, that seems like just a noble dream, that's an easy one. The Conservation Fund, again, from a planning sense, we've been doing that or CPA's been doing that, it would make sense to continue doing that because that's, the planning board relies on that and needs that. Not, and so I would prioritize maybe those above the others and then, you know, depending on how you break out the funding, but I, I still, out of all of these, I think, from a planning board need, that the fields have the hottest heat.
I, I, I completely agree that, I think the fields do. I'm not sure about a play structure or the other parts, but I think the fields do too. And I still have, you know, whether or not it'll work, but I still think Bets Field is a viable option for those fields in the short term as well. And I don't think the rec department, at least from the inquiries I've made, they haven't responded to the possibility of using Bets Field for, for something. So I think, but I do agree that, that the, the fields are a high priority. I'm completely okay with that, but not with a one-hundred percent funding.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent.
Well, it'd be interesting to know, I mean, it could be the strategy to ask for everything and not, and clearly not expect.
Well, that's what happens to capital improvements.
People do that all the time.
Well, capital improvements, every department from the city comes to capital improvements and asks for everything.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, really, yeah.
And then the, the goal of the Capital Improvements Committee is to, to figure out and prioritize and make recommendations to the city council, just like the CPA. And the city council makes the ultimate decision.
They make the ultimate, yeah.
But, but I think it's, you know.
We certainly don't wanna recommend things that are gonna burden the city for decades, you know, in terms of this bonding process. You know, that's, doesn't seem, I mean, but we obviously are gonna have to do some bonding this time because there's so many good applications.
Is it, does this, does a set look like it usually does? I mean, I'm thinking like when we fixed the Lilly Library, that's a, you know, that was a small ticket item. Were there any smaller items that, these are all surprisingly large.
All big, no little ones. Yeah, there was something about putting signs on trees that was five thousand dollars or something. Lilly Library, those windows were thirteen, yeah, but there's nothing like that this time.
Is that because the application process is too long, so people don't think about it?
I don't know.
Yeah, we have people be able to get current, but I'm right.
It would be nice that there were some smaller.
Yeah, that's something that.
Very satisfying, yeah. Little goodies that you wouldn't.
I think it would show a mix of interest in different.
I mean, a lot of the candidates, there are four candidates who are running to be on, there are two vobing positions there and four people running for two slots. And a lot of them were saying they want more outreach and different kinds of applications. But in fact, the CPC receives applications, we don't, we don't have, we don't go out and say, why don't you apply to us? We haven't done that and maybe we should. It's not part of our operating procedure at this point to get more variety. Some people are, say there haven't been enough grants given to wards six and seven. But when you look at the map, you know, you see grants all over the place. A lot of people who signed their repeal of CPA, it's not, it's not dust.
Well, I'm thinking even, because, because I'm.
That's hard work.
We just paid the architect forty thousand dollars to survey first churches to see if it's, can be viable in the long-term reuse.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it never occurred to me, that might have been a CPA, a CPC project.
It could have been, yeah.
So.
Since they got ready before change. They got money for their roof and their ceiling.
Yeah, correct, because it's a meeting house, right?
Even though there was objections because of the separation of church and state. And people thought it was not a good thing to do, church.
All right, any other comments?
Thank you for your input, I really, really appreciate it. And I think putting it on the agenda for the, for the planning board in early in the public comment period.
So can you let Steve on that, know, and Carolyn know when that is, so?
It's on, it's all public comment, but I.
Uh, anybody else? Sure, potion, something?
Good luck with your elbow, Catherine.